Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our business meeting to order. We will begin with our presentation of colors and the pledge and a welcome. And throughout the meeting today, this is the last meeting of the school year, and we also will be the last meeting for several of our school board members. And so you will find them featured throughout the meeting. And we're going to have Dr. Robinson, our senior member, if he would begin with the welcome.
Senior member?
Senior member of the board. That as in age, duration.
That wasn't great, though.
Yes.
Unfortunately, we don't have a color card tonight, but we do request that all cell phones and pagers be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting. It's become our tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. We're going to proceed next with a musical introduction. Couple of weeks ago, or maybe about a month ago now, we received a great report on trauma-informed care. And part of what came out of that was the importance of music. And so we've, at several of our recent meetings, have begun with a musical interlude or introduction. And we are fortunate today that Reverend Haywood, one of our board members who is very much musically inclined, is going to lead a little trio. And then when they get done, he will introduce the trio. So, floor is yours.
Please let me introduce you to our student musician. She is the first chair clarinetist from Granby High School. She's also fifth in her class and first on the tennis team.
Wow.
She's come to accompany us. Now, our teacher, Lindsay, and my teacher is Kathy O'Grum. And she is a former teacher at the Governor's School. I'm not one of them. She brings me along. She says she's still with the Governor's School, so that's good. I believe, Gail, I believe Lindsay's parents are here, Gail and Norman. We're glad you're here. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Glenn Denning. Where is he at? Okay, there he is, the Granby High School band director. Thank you, Kathy, for joining us. Granby had all excellent ratings.
Superior.
Superior ratings. And it's been that way for how many years?
Six out of the last seven.
Yeah. So this is great.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen. It's hard to believe that we've closed another school year. Last week, we had our five high school graduations. And that was exciting. And we're looking forward to being able to provide to the public the total scholarship dollars, but they were significant. And really proud of all of our graduates and their accomplishments. And of course, student rep to the school board, Arturo Mendoza, was one of those graduates last week. We've also completed our promotion exercises. And so now we have our students who are moving on to the next grade level. We're gearing up for summer programs, summer professional development. So people often ask, well, what do you do at the school district during the summer? You have the summer off? No, we're getting ready for all, we're doing all of those things that will have us ready to open schools in the fall and then provide our summer programs. So you'll see busyness around the district as it relates to working on our facilities. You'll see our buses start running next week for summer programs. So for everyone who was so relieved that they weren't on the road and the flashing slow down, school zone signs weren't on allowed you to go a little bit quicker, they'll be back next week for the summer programs. And then our, as you said, our summer professional development. So it has been a great school year. And we're excited about what next year's, what next school year brings forward. Each month, we provide a video to the community and to the board showcasing some of the great events of Norfolk Public Schools. And so I'd like to thank the Communications Department and Channel 47 and ask that they share this month's video now, please.
Over seventeen hundred seniors crossed the stage during Norfolk Public Schools' five high school graduation ceremonies at the Ted Constant Convocation Center on the campus of Old Dominion University. This year's graduating class was very ambitious, with two Gates Scholars and a scholarship total nearing seventy million dollars. Congratulations to the class of 2018. Seniors in Maury High School's Medical and Health Specialties Program held their annual graduation ceremony at Eastern Virginia Medical School. This year's graduating class of thirty students earned over five million dollars in scholarship funds and averaged a 4.2 GPA. Student awards, teacher appreciations, recognition of graduates, and a keynote address by 2011 graduate, Justin Kaplan, were all parts of this special ceremony. After thirty-two years in existence, this amazing program continues to make a lasting impression on students and their academic careers.
I think I went into college already having, you know, a medical background. I knew some of the words I was going to be learning. I knew some of the concepts that I, you know, would be reinforced later in college. And really, it just exposed me to a wide array of, you know, medical knowledge that a lot of people don't have the opportunity to explore. So it's been immensely helpful.
This program has had a huge impact on me. When I started, when I went to high school, I really didn't know what I wanted to do. And it showed me a lot of opportunities through medicine and ways to continue my career in education. It's a really great program. And it provides so many neat opportunities that are not available to really anyone else in the country. So it's a unique program that we have great opportunity to participate in.
It's definitely shown me that medicine is where I want to go. It has shown me, it's given me a head start, like my EMR program, anatomy, working with actual cadavers. It's really solidified my plans for the future. It's a great place to start. Even if you don't think it's for you, I think you can find something in the program that you're really going to love.
Some of our students had the opportunity to show off their culinary skills in front of their peers. Thanks to a partnership with Now Your Cooking Studios, these students were part of a program that helped them become more independent.
Well, what we have today are students who participate in the post-secondary transition program. And what they've done here is they've come and participated in a four- to five-month program that focuses specifically on independent living that specializes in culinary arts. So they are working on food prep. They are working on a lot of different things that will help them develop further their skills of independent living.
This year, we decided to take on a partnership with Norfolk Public Schools for the second year. And basically, what we want to do is create job skills and also culinary skills. So independent living, food safety, and things of that nature. It's been a great journey.
The students also learned how to budget, compare prices, and effectively purchase their own groceries. One student who is grateful for this experience is Colin Simon, who through this program now has a full-time job at Marriott.
Well, that experience of hell has really helped me a lot. Because I really, I love the teachers over there. I love them. I love Ms. Deborah. I love Ms. Hansrom. They've really helped me grow as a man. Helped me, and not only that, but they helped me be more, I helped myself be more responsible as a person. Because I wasn't responsible when I came over here. So I had to learn a lot, had to be more responsible as a person. A lot of responsibility to take care of in life.
I'm so very proud of Colin. Colin has always been a person, you could see it in his eyes, that he was very driven and he was ready to go. It's been great to see him go to work and be prepared and be on time and start as a person who's just bringing in the deliveries. And now they're getting ready to move him to the kitchen.
The job is actually great. First, this is my first time, and the first time getting a full-time job. And it's going great. And I love it. I love the people over there. And I love the job that I do over there. And I love getting every paycheck every two weeks.
Creativity was on display as Norfolk Public Schools hosted the Seventeenth Annual Fine Arts Festival at Norview High School. Over one thousand pieces of artwork from all grade levels were available for viewing, along with hands-on activities and artists working live on site. Several middle school ensembles and elementary all-city music groups were also in attendance, performing a variety of types of music for enthusiastic audiences.
Well, it's part of the curriculum that every ensemble has a chance to show their skill set and also how they work together. Music is an individual pursuit as an artist, but the ensemble brings another layer to their purpose as a musician. And the parents and community should be able to enjoy the fruits of their labor.
Well, I think it gives, it's confidence builder for starters. And it's also, art is an outlet. And so being able to display it and let the community to see what we're doing in our classrooms and some of the experiences we're offering our students throughout the district, this is that opportunity to come out and see it all at one time, K through 12, and see that progression in the artwork also as the students move through grade levels.
I really enjoy it. It's good to show, because the little kids, the other kids are here and get to see what they get to look forward to. I think it's great that they can feature so much in one event.
Well, it's amazing, because now, all the hard work that they've put in, the dedication, the time that she's taken in her lunch period to practice, to go to Saturday sessions, and to see it all culminate in this beautiful event.
I'm a proud Papa. It's just amazing. So I'm just beaming.
An artist from the Wolf Trap Institute visited pre-K students at Ingleside Elementary and their parents for some unique instruction. This interactive performance entitled "Journey to Africa: Sharing Family Experiences" effectively used music and dance as storytelling tools.
So here, this program is called a family involvement workshop. So it's supposed to be for the young children and their parents and teachers. And it's a program of integrating arts with curriculum, right? So it's music, there's role play, there is imaginary travel, there's a lot of movement. And then we bring, you know, stories to life.
It's important, because it's different. It's not the norm. It's very diverse. You know, they get to experience like Africa and just a different way to read "Brown Bear, Brown Bear", instead of just, he's actually singing it and the kids are, you know, interacting with him.
Oh, this has been amazing, to watch them engaged, to see the smiles on their faces. They're listening, they're learning some of those problem-solving skills of having to attend to all the background noise as well as being engaged in the process. It's been wonderful to see that.
For children, they need to have everything extra and animated. So I think because he was so extra and animated, it just resonated with them. He was interacting really well. All the kids were. Everybody was kind of captivated by what was going on. So it was really interactive for the parents as well.
I think it gives them something different, something that he usually wouldn't get at home or even in the classroom. So this definitely is a different experience and opens him up to something different.
Berkeley Campastella Early Childhood Center hosted a DAYMAC showcase, which featured their pre-K students participating in various STEM and technology-based activities. Guests were able to interact with these knowledgeable three- and four-year-olds who were quick to demonstrate their iPad and coding skills.
Kali, who was my partner and came over and sat with me at the table, she let me know what I could and could not do. But what was most rewarding, she actually let me participate in what she was doing on her iPad as well. She is a good teacher. She's patient. She asked me questions. I could ask her questions. And this is technology at its most advanced part.
I was truly impressed with the young man and his knowledge and his understanding of the concepts, his engagement with it, and his comfort level, really, of being able to teach what he has learned. You know, my mother was a teacher. And she would always say that if a student taught another student or if a student taught an adult, then you really know that they're grasping the concepts.
I think we're preparing them to be critical thinkers. We're preparing them to learn new things with technology. Maybe they can be excited by what they're learning. Somebody might be an engineer and use what they're learning now to fuel their excitement when they go to kindergarten, first grade. Most of them will go to the STEM school. And you know, who knows? It could be a lifelong learning experience for them. It might be a potential job in their future.
A few days prior to the DAYMAC event, students at Berkeley Campastella Early Childhood Center each received their own brand-new book to take home with them for the summer, thanks to the generosity of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers.
We are here to give all the boys and girls a free new book to carry home for the summer to read, read, read. And even if they have little brothers and sisters, they can read the book to them. And it's so important that they continue their education and literacy during the summer. So that's why we're here on today.
We do two schools every year. That's our goal, to give books away to two schools and it's sitting off of every year. And it is extremely gratifying. It's, I taught seventeen years here in elementary school. And you never get over that, watching kids as they learn to read, as they learn to like to read.
I think it's fantastic. It's a great way of giving back to our children and our students. And this is what they do, they're teachers. And so they've laid the foundation. And so now our students get to take it home and share it with their families.
We're ecstatic. We're just elated, because once we got the call from Ms. Loretta saying that we have chosen Berkeley Campastella to be recipients of a free book for every child, we just, you know, jumped for joy. Because anytime we can put literature in the hands of our students, we know that we're promoting lifelong learning.
High school students from Norfolk Academy partnered with students from Tidewater Park Elementary in a writing club. And the end result was a published book. The book, which is called "Work Hard, Calm Down, and Be a Good Neighbor", is about how these students are working to make their community and the world a better place.
They're writing about just the way that they love their communities, the things that they want for their communities, that they're hoping that they can provide as they get older. And I just think the way they want to make the world better for everyone is just such an encouraging and exciting thing. I'm glad to be a part of it.
We've been in touch for the past four years. It's actually our second book that we published. Every Tuesday, they come. And they have a relationship with our kids. And they build stories. And then at the end of the year, every year, we publish the book. This built their confidence. It showed them that, you know, you can do anything that you want to do, anything that you can put your mind to, not only for the Tidewater Park students as well as the Norfolk Academy students.
As part of their annual lighthouse project, BBNT Bank built a little free library outside James Monroe Elementary to encourage students to read more after-school hours. Volunteers from the bank also visited classrooms and read books to students.
BBNT does an annual lighthouse project. This is our tenth year of doing it. And every year, we donate funds and volunteer time to helping those in the community. And this year, our team chose the little library to do for the James Monroe Elementary School. I think books and learning how to read open up new doors and experiences for children that they may not otherwise have. It's a way for them to maybe travel to other places without having to get on an airplane.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV 47 or the NPS website.
So I hope you all enjoyed seeing all of the exciting things that have been going on, as well as the community partnerships and sincere engagement and support of our students and schools. And so we're glad to share that. So that's the superintendent's report this month, Mr. Jordan.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Boone. Excuse me. I mentioned earlier that we have four school board members who are going to be transitioning following, actually, June 30th. You know, you all don't stop till June 30th. But tonight is their last business meeting. And so we just wanted to take a moment and thank each one of them for their hard and dedicated service. This group has worked together as a team for the last three years. As I mentioned earlier, Dr. Robinson preceded all of us that are on the board right now. And so I just want to turn things back over to Dr. Boone and Mr. Butts to kind of walk us through an opportunity just to say thank you to the board members for their service. When we get to the end of the meeting on the Board Matters, we'll allow each of you to give any additional remarks that you like. But we do want to make sure that we do take this opportunity to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. We know high-performing organizations certainly celebrate all milestones. And this is a milestone for Norfolk Public Schools. In the two and a half years that I've been here as superintendent, one of the things we talked about collectively when I was hired is how do we build some stability and begin to steady the ship? And that begins with leadership at the top and with the board. So we've been very fortunate for these two and a half years to have stability on the school board. Because again, it's when you share the collective vision that we're, when we create the collective vision and share that work going forward, that we begin to see the progress that we've recognized in Norfolk Public Schools. So I'm most appreciative for your service as school board members, not only personally, but also representing the 5,000, so employees we have and our nearly 30,000 students. We want to say thank you for all that you've done. And the board, and we've put together a, you can't, you have to leave with something. So let me say it that way. And so we do have some gifts for you in appreciation of your service. And no, you can't leave a couple of these things behind, because you thought, as you move on, you don't have to do that. And you know, as Ms. Doyle, as you moved to city council and as Tracy Richter said it best earlier in the work session for, just because you're leaving the board in these first and third Wednesday meetings doesn't mean that your service to the school district and to our students has to end. So we welcome you at all times. So, Mr. Butts?
And Ms. Bassin, Dr. Gabriel, if we can assist.
And as you see, one of the gifts that you're being presented with tonight is certainly a reflection of the work of the last two and a half years, particularly as we've provided you all one of the MPS redesign models with the four gears and the four pillars of the work that we are doing and the theory of action that is driving us forward. So we thank you for that support in helping us to develop that MPS redesign. And then you... have some other goodies.
Well, I think Reverend Haywood has his plaque out. If you can take out your plaque and show that. And I can't read it from here, but trust me, I'll read it. Says, "To each in recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service and commitment to our students, families, staff, and stakeholders," and it has "school board member in the years of service." Yeah, we also have included, if you walk downstairs on the way out, if you look up on the wall and you see some missing photographs, we've also presented each of them with their photographs that we've had up on the downstairs as well. So.
So we thank you for your service.
So we will proceed, and then, like I said, at the end of the meeting, we'll have an opportunity to talk some more. On our business, back to our business agenda, next we have citizen comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Again, if you would come forward to the podium, the podium may be adjusted to suit your height. We ask that you state your name, whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the system, or any other relationship you may have with the division. We ask that you state your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or organization, you may ask others to rise and be recognized. If you have any written statements, you may give those to the clerk. Each person will have a maximum of three minutes to present, and we just ask that when your time is up, if you are in the middle of a statement, if you would complete your statement and then proceed to your seat. School board does not respond to citizens' remarks at the time that they are given. With that, Mr. Butts?
Yes, so we have a total of seven speakers for today's meeting, the first being Mr. Robert Lincoln, to be followed by Vivian Hester.
Good evening, members. Good evening, members of school board. If you, I'm Robert Lincoln, Robert Lincoln, and I'm here just to help the schools save money and make better programs for the children. A few months ago, I spoke to the school board and introduced you to the game of poleball, and asked you to make the game a part of the intramural program and the physical education classes in Norfolk schools. Since then, there have some developments in the sports scene that may help put the cost of bringing poleball into the Norfolk schools in perspective. Today, I want to tell you about a lower cost and greater benefits associated with poleball compared to other sports. First, let's look at costs. Recently, on April 18, 2018, an article appeared on page one of the sports section of the Virginia Pilot. The article said that there were 1,000 young lacrosse players from Southampton Roads High Schools who are trying to get the game of lacrosse recognized as a varsity sport in the high schools. One thing such recognition would do, would probably do, is get the schools to absorb the costs associated with the sport. And this was, it appeared on the front page of the Pilot, on about 1,000 students who are varsity players. So I want to compare the cost of 1,000 players to play poleball compared to the cost of 1,000 players to play lacrosse. I prepared a cost comparison, which will I leave for you. It shows that to play lacrosse safely, you need about $552 worth of equipment for each player. This does not include the cost of shoes, as we will assume that players will buy their own shoes. Now, to play poleball, there is no equipment needed. All that is needed is a number three or four soccer ball that costs $8 a poleball. So to play lacrosse, the cost would be, for 1,000 players, $552,000. And to play poleball, if you bought each player a ball, it'd be $8,000. A similar cost comparison can be made with football, field hockey, and other sports. The other benefits of poleball over lacrosse and other football, field hockey are fewer injuries and using more skills. All players of poleball use the skills of throwing a ball, catching it, kicking it off the ground or out of their hands, running with the ball, and running to catch other players or running from other players. I'm asking the board to consider the benefits of the game for children and the athletic programs of the Norfolk schools. Then the board can recommend that the game be introduced to the students through the physical education classes and the intramural programs. Is that the three-minute thing?
We have your time down there, you're fine.
Two soccer balls cost $16, so for $16, you can have four teams playing poleball. But those, but those schools that already have a soccer program and already have soccer balls, there's no need to buy more balls. So there's no additional cost to them add poleball to their athletic programs. If there are two or three high schools or middle schools in Norfolk that don't have a soccer program, I'm willing to donate two soccer balls to each of those schools, along with a copy of rules of playing the game, and assist them in setting up their programs.
Thank you very much, sir. Butts?
No, this is Hester. Good evening. My name is Vivian Hester. I'm a resident of Norfolk and a former administrator at Norfolk Public Schools. I'm also the chair of the Concerned Citizens of Bogota, Washington High School, and at this time, with members of the Concerned Citizens and friends of Bogota, Washington, and the Athletic Association, please stand. You should have a copy of my information, and it is entitled, "Where is the Equity?" We think it's just wonderful for Maury High School, all the preparation that's been done for that new building. You've had meetings held at the community level for input. The students have been given information about the new schools, so the students are excited about the changes. The plans for the school have been drawn to ensure the legacy of Maury is maintained, and funds appear to be set aside for this program. We are concerned because the Bogota community has not had the benefit of this, and we know that there is a process, and we feel we've been left out of that process. The Bogota, Washington community, on the other hand, always hears rumors about directions planned for the school, but nothing concrete. Meetings with the community have been requested by, have been requested, but the school board and superintendent have not responded to give a date. There are rumors about a new educational focus for Bogota this September, but the community has not been involved in that discussion. Our students do not know what will happen in September and what new classes will be offered. Our students still are not able to use the fields to practice and to host spring sports. Our question to the board and to the leadership of Norfolk Public Schools is where is the equity and respect for the Bogota, Washington community? You have never asked us what we want, so let me share with you what we want. First of all, we would like a polytech CTE-type curriculum that preserves the arts, sports, and history of our Bogota, Washington High School. We want our feeder schools that are not accredited to have special programs to address these educational concerns. If the issue is not addressed, Bogota, Washington is set up for failure. We will not be able to maintain our accreditation. Quarterly community meetings until the plans for the new Bogota has been developed. And we also want equity for our students and our community. We have a mission, and we have a focus. Our mission is to serve as a volunteer partner to aid in the support, aid in and support the efforts of the students and staff of Bogota, Washington High School to remain accredited. We are waiting, we are waiting, we are waiting.
Our next speakers, Ms. Stella Council, to be followed by Ms. Carol Stokes. I'm sorry, Carl Stokes, Mr. Carl Stokes.
Good evening. My name is Stella Council, and I am a resident of Broad Creek. I am also a proud graduate of Bogota, Washington. I graduated in 1965. This coming year, I have a great granddaughter who will be attending Richard Bowlin, so I am very concerned about Norfolk Public Schools. I've also had an opportunity to work within the schools. I worked with Ms. Dr. White at Richard Bowlin, and then Mr. Goodman at Richard Bowlin. But I'm more concerned because every time I hear something, it's not very good, and the community is concerned. I also recently sent an email to you, so now you have a face to put with that email. The residents of Broad Creek want to know what's going on with Bogota. Rather than to follow the rumors, I want to come before you. I want you to come to us and have a public meeting, so we can ask questions and get answers. This is not the form for questions and answers, but that's what we want. We want you to come to us, and we can sit down, and we can discuss what's going on with Bogota. The community is concerned, not just Broad Creek, the neighboring communities as well. So I'm asking that when you reconvene in September, that you would have a public meeting where we can come and sit and ask questions and get answers and find out what the focus is. Where is Bogota going? What's happening with our school? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carl Stokes. I'm a senior logistics manager, retired from National Technologies Associates. I'm also a graduate of Bogota, Washington High School. I'm a member of the Bogota, Washington Alumni Foundation. A couple of my concerns is one, I need to ensure, or try to help you ensure, that Bogota, Washington High School is a viable high school for this, for this community from here on. And in order to do that, we need the feeder schools to make sure that they are viable and sending quality students to the high school. I was really concerned last year when, at the last meeting, you had an overflow crowd here of parents and students expressing their concern of them losing their principal, particularly at Ruffner Junior High School, Middle School. And you had students crying, and mothers pleading with you, and they were very sincere. And I thought at that time that you would give them some consideration as to overturning the decision to let that young lady go, because from what I understand, she had made vast improvements over the short time that she was there. And to my surprise, when I got home, less than an hour later, I saw Mr. Jordan being interviewed by a reporter indicating that you heard what the people said, and you considered what they said, but the decisions remained the same, remain the same. I don't see how you can reconsider, you had time to even consider what the people said. But I look at the school now, and it has regressed. A lot of the activities that went on over there at that school has a lot of disruptions, low morale between the students and the teachers. So I think somebody should be held accountable for that decision. My other concern is the lie of Bogota, Washington High School, School of the Arts, Academy of the Arts, or whatever you want to call it. It takes more than a couple of teachers, art teachers in the box of crayon, to consider this the School of the Arts. So next semester, the school opens in September, I hope that we can make this lie a truth and have a real School of the Arts. The funding for the equipment that's necessary, the facilities that necessary, and the professional teachers that are necessary to make this a first-class School of the Arts.
Next, we have Mr. Malcolm Avery, to be followed by Ms. Mary Simpson-Jones.
Yes, Malcolm Avery, former teacher, coach, administrator at my high school, where my parents, both mother and father, attended Bogota, Washington High School. To members of the board, before I really get into my concern, I'd like to thank Ms. Yvonne Wagner for your service and your conduct to the friends and alumni of Bogota, Washington. You've served us well, and we will say thank you, thank you, thank you. Having said that, the other thing is, you showed early on that a culinary program, culinary program that was presented on the video, that program was instituted or initiated by Ms. Wagner. That program was started at Bogota, Washington High School as a means of allowing special-needs kids to have a job, getting jobs. She started that program. Again, thank you. Thank you for your service. The athletic program or programs at Bogota, Washington, we are still lacking fields for practice. For any of our activities, we have to go to a middle school. Why? We are high school. The middle school ought to be coming to us. We have no track surface, we have no tennis courts, we have no baseball or softball. Why? And with the names for CTE, Academy of the Arts, whatever the programs that we are tagging Bogota with, how are these programs going to affect athletics? Because now I see that somewhere down the line, choice schools or choice seats is going to come together or come into play with rezoning or zoning, and then if a certain number of kids don't sign up for the CTE program, how is, how are these programs going to affect athletics? We have, in the city, any number of athletes who've gone on to Virginia Tech, and every year, we, Bogota, the Bogota community, we have given our best to the city and the community. Why can't we get some answers? And we still haven't gotten answers on the mold certificates, on the mold. The sound system is awful, the lights in the gymnasium, 11 lights out in the gym. I came to you last year with the same concern, and I've really put some of these on paper again, I resubmit it. And I hope you look over this and give it some strong thought. For anything that you're about to do now, I still see that we need to delay something until we get a new board, or is a new members coming in? Some of these things, we need to, we need to delay on because we don't, we've not really been given answers to any of our questions over the last four to eight years I have been before, maybe not you as a board, but any number of superintendents, starting back with, I don't even want to tell you who to start back with, it may date me. But I've come up with the same concerns. Mr. Clarence Sessinsen, I stood before you any number of times with the same concern. Please, folks, our athletes need some consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Buck, before you start my time, I want to, the members, board members that are leaving, I hope that all the decisions that you have made through your years here were conscious and that you can live with them. Because doing things because people ask you to, it's not a conscious decision. As upon that, we just did the pledge of allegiance and it says injustice and liberty for all. I feel like it is not being done by Norfolk Public Schools. Once upon a time, when citizens brought concerns to the board and the board do not speak back to you, we were given a letter stating who were the person who was handling the problem. Now, we do not get any information. As last month, I brought a political issue to you, I have not heard anything of it. And you don't hear any writing. I asked Mr. Billups recently about a staff person who was on the council. And Mr. Billups did not know because I have been here over 20 years, as Dr. Whibley told me. And he could only get the information that was given to him. The person in question was under the Magic Johnson thing. She was here way before the Magic Johnson. So whoever gave him that information, gave him the wrong information, the wrong information because that person was at a middle school and she was taken out of the school because she was elected to council. So I don't know, I don't put it on Mr. Billups because he did the best he could and all. I hope with the new board leaving and going your way, I hope you still try to do the best you can. I hope Ms. Doyle, when you get over there at City Council, as Dr. Whibley told me, 20 years, you may be seeing me another 20 years. And I hope that the superintendent would take charge of issues and concerns of the people, not ignore, not try to put them on the back burner and some of your staff. Because I'm the type of person that will come back and ask questions. And when I ask questions, that's all. And it's amazing that literature was written about Carlos Clanton, but no literature was written about Janelle Banks. So everybody wondering where Janelle Banks is, but yet it was freedom of information to give about Carlos Clanton. And I think that was very below the belt unconsciously for you to release information like that. And I would like to know why Janelle Banks is not here and I would be forwarding a letter of the freedom of information of why. I know you may tell me that's a personnel issue, but it was a rumor that she was let go because of political propaganda and all, and that she didn't answer the phone. Well, none of you all answered the phone. Sometimes I have to call, call the school board to get numbers, school board chair to get numbers. You get the automated thing all the time, like no one's at their desk. So I think you need to improve in that because people don't have patience to wait as at the public schools. We'll contact you within 24 hours. Okay? And I wish you'd take that to heed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Ms. Lana Presley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Lana Presley, representing the Golden Heights Civic League. And of course, the students at Lindenwood Elementary School. We put Lindenwood Elementary School on our agenda two months ago at the Civic League. We've been reading the papers and understanding that there's maybe some changes coming up for that school. And I just wanted to come out tonight, I haven't been very involved in this and I'm a teeny bit embarrassed about that, but better late than never, right? Right. I've been thinking about early childhood and, and the students there. We, we, I go on the premise that the parents are the children's first teachers. I, I know we, we say that a lot and we've been working trying to get the parental involvement up in, in a lot of activities in our community. But one of the things I'd like to ask you to do, and I don't know if you've made the decisions about where the children will be going at Lindenwood or what's going to happen because I've been involved in some personal matters and haven't been really keeping up with that. But I would like for you to visit that school if you haven't already. If you just, just, just go there, see it, look at it. It's a very, very old school. The other thing is, as someone said previously, there should be some, before you do something at that school, like moving the children or tearing down the building or whatever is being proposed, maybe there ought to be some focus group in the community, you know, hear from the people. And I, I think that's what, what I'm, what I'm hearing people say as they come to the podium this evening. You know, the people want to be heard, the people want to have some input, they just want to vent maybe, they just want to share. And the other thing is, if you think about tearing down that school, then the community would like to probably see a new school. Don't just take it down and build condos back there on the beautiful waterfront. That is, you know, one of the things that, and, and you may know this or you may not, but I'm going to take this down a little bit. The word on the street is, and you got to believe the word on the street now, okay? If you don't want to believe it, then don't, but I'm telling you, the word on the street is that they're going to tear down Lindenwood and they're going to build condos back there. So I just wanted to come tonight to share and hopefully the children there, they'll see some improvements in their SOLs and we'll get some teachers that are qualified and some of those other things can happen over there for Lindenwood. Budget for a new school, please. Thank you.
So Chair, that concludes our speakers for the night.
All right. Thank you very much. We will proceed with our agenda. Next up, we have a policy discussion. We have several policies that the Policy Committee has reviewed. Also, after we do the policies, we moved an item from our workshop dealing with the Booker T. Washington High School name resolution. We agreed to move that under the policy discussion as well. So at this point, I will turn things over to Ms. Bassin and Reverend Haywood as the members of the, board members to the Policy Committee.
Okay. Board members, as you see before you, you see several policies and a majority, well, all of them reflect legal updates, cross, cross-reference updates and minor language changes from General Assembly. Nothing substantive or content-wise don't reflect any major changes. And that, that is it. There is nothing major in, in them and I hope you had a chance to review the, the red line drafts.
I also might add that the Virginia School Board Association, in the six years that I've been on the board historically, they have been sending down these policy revisions and they will send a number of policies together typically around February and May. And so we've kind of got them late this year, but the, the reason why you see so many there is because that was what was sent to us. And we thought that because the, there are the, the policies are simply updates in minor areas like, for instance, a changing of will for shell or shell for will and, and legal references, changes and things like that. So the policies themselves are, have, as Mrs. Bassin has said, you will see that there are only minor changes that are there. So that's why you have so many because we've gotten all these before and we wanted to bring them before the school board, before the term ended.
And can you just, just kind of restate again, so while we have these policies from VSBA or going through the VSBA process, they also go through a process where they are reviewed by the administration?
Correct. So once we get the updates from our Virginia School Board Association policy service, what happens is it goes through the administration for review and it also goes through, the board has a policy committee that also reviews to ensure that the, what the updates are and whether we agree. And occasionally, we are actually have more information in our Norfolk policies such as one that did come through VSBA was, for instance, our non-discrimination policy, in which case we have, it is not included in this because we have one that is much stronger than what the Virginia School Board Association has. So what you see before you, the administration reviewed it. Of course, we've had a busy spring as well with educational planning and budget. And so it really required time of the administration and the Policy Committee to really review all of these. And so now what you have before you is, you know, as we've, as we've stated, minor revisions and updates. And so I ask, you know, for any questions, if any of you have questions related to any of them, we're happy to take them. If not, we can move on to the next item.
Any questions, comments on any of the policies before you?
I do.
Dr. Gabriel.
So when did all of these policies come before the, the Policy Committee? Because it's just so many and I understand that they're legal changes, but it would have been nice to have a heads up at our last work session that these were coming down even though they're language changes. So I, I'd just like to get an idea as to when you all received them and how it kind of came through down to today.
Sure. Well, the administration reviewed them in March and at the end of March. And then in April, we actually didn't have a Policy Committee meeting, I believe it was April or May. And so we reviewed between that time and June 15th where we last met. And I believe that we did have mention of it at the last work session. And this has been, you know, posted for review for the last several days too. So, you know, giving opportunity for any board questions to come forward. And of course, we're having this time right now to discuss any of them and you've seen the red line versions of all of the drafts. So I hope that clarifies things a little bit.
So I do have a question about policy, I believe it's EBA, the building and grounds. And because I guess what, what's going to happen is, is this is going to go on the consent agenda and we're going to either approve it or not approve it. And then underneath the policy, is it going to say revised and then this date?
It'll have today's date once it's approved, right?
And these are, there, there are some really important policies here that, you know, if they weren't brought before us, I, I wonder if we would be having a little bit more in-depth discussion. So let me just bring forth EBA, Buildings and Grounds Inspection. This talks about the responsibility to maintain the school buildings at maximum efficiency and inspections, inspections that include major and minor maintenance items. And so when I read this and I try to be on a policy level, there, there are questions that come to mind. Not that I disagree with what the red line version has, but in order to have the discussion and to feel comfortable with to have the stamp revised at such and such date, I probably would want to go through some of the questions that I have and just kind of talk them through. For example, when, when do we do the inspections and are they part of the public, part of, you know, what the public can see? You know, those types of things. So that's my concern about why we have the bulk here. And I'm not, I'm not, I don't know how anyone else feels about it.
Let's just speak to that for a moment. So just as a reminder, so I think we transitioned and reviewed our practices around the forming of the Policy Committee maybe four years ago, at least three years ago. And as part of our work, we, you know, decided and recognized that part of our responsibility is to be policy-driven. So we went through a series of work sessions and meetings. We developed a flow chart where we described how we established the Policy Committee. We put administration members on the committee. We went through the process that Ms. Bassin described earlier. We also discussed as a board and it's in our, in our norms and protocols around how at any point in time, you know, members can bring forward policies, can ask for policies to be pulled. So for example, you just described that some of these policies are on the consent agenda. When I get to the consent agenda, I always ask if there's anything that board members would like to see pulled or reconsidered, so we will follow that, that process. This particular policy, just using an example, as you know, we talk about the board's role in setting the policy and the administration's role in establishing the regulations. So this policy that you have right here as this example just sets a broad umbrella, so to speak, that comes from the legal code and the General Assembly. With underneath that, there may be regulations that the administration would bring forward that are available on board docs for us to review. We always have the opportunity to have those, those discussions. So I just want to make sure that, that process that we agreed to as a board is still the same process. The only thing that's a little different today, because we were, because of the last work session, we had so many things and because of the scheduling, we moved those here. And the request of the Policy Committee was to really take a look at those policies that needed to be ratified, if you will, as a result of General Assembly action for July 1, as part of, part of their action. If the board this evening decides to approve any of these policies, it doesn't mean that the board then cannot still come back and suggest revisions or review regulations or any other questions that, you know, any board member has about the, the policy. So I don't want there to be this impression that somehow this thing gets stuck in submit by action today and therefore it cannot be reviewed. That's, it can always be reviewed. They're always open for suggestions and any board member can always come forward with any recommendations as relates to, to our policies. But we do have to make sure that we are aligned with the state code and that's what this is trying to do is to make sure that we're aligned with the state code.
Mr. Jordan?
I, I think part of the concern is just the vast number of, of policies at this point in time. And I would recommend going forward in the future that we, we introduce the policies if nothing else, to have them delivered the day of the work session to give the board members a couple of weeks to review them and bring up any questions that they might have. It just seems like this is, this particular time, it feels rushed. And I understand the reason behind it with all the other presentations that were made during our work sessions, but at, at least if we had it on the docket on the work session, then we would have had, felt more comfortable reviewing them up to the, the board meeting.
Do we know others?
I concur and I think I did send something to you about the vast number that we didn't have enough to me a chance to review.
Yeah, and, and it's duly noted. I mean, we, duly noted. Any, any other? So... Any, any other, so with that having been said, with the recommendation that's coming forward from the policy committee, what's, what's the will of the board then? Because I just want to get clarity around any, any action that we need to take that is driven by state code? Or anything that anyone would like to have pulled, reviewed, the whole, the whole bundle? I mean, that's, that's the will of the board, so. Dr. Robinson?
I would recommend, since each one of these policies has been reviewed by the administration, reviewed by the policy committee, and it was deemed that there were no substantial policy changes, no changes to the policy themselves other than regulations and, and updating in, in wording, that we move forward and, and accept these policies. And if a board member wishes to circle back and review that later on down the road, then I would highly recommend that. For the incoming board members, this is not a good thing to, 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 to put on their plate right away because this is probably one of the most confusing and can be overwhelming, the, trying to go through each one of these at, at this part, point in time. I think with, with this board, as seasoned as it is, and the trust, my personal trust that I have in the policy committee, I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and, and support the passage or the acceptance of these policies.
So none of the policies are new. Looked at the red line version, that's correct. None of the policies are new.
Correct, correct.
It's mild legal changes. And we-
Legal references.
Legal references, yeah. And we did discuss in depth the bring your own device and the code of student contact, conduct, which is in- separate one that we're going to just, that is still included in the consent agenda.
Correct. Well, those are separate, right? We, we discuss those and-
Right, but they're still going to be grouped in the consent agenda.
Not in this consent agenda.
Is there a reason why we have those separate?
Yes, recommended change.
Yes, we, yeah. They're going to come back. So we, we discussed it and then there are some changes that then the policy committee will review again before bringing it back forward to the, to the board.
For, for both of them?
So you got to pull this-
Correct. So, you know, the process is usually that we discuss it, sometimes there are recommended changes. We go back, the policy committee then works on it. The administration also verifies that the changes are appropriate. And then policy committee reviews and typically then they are posted for approval.
Mr. Jordan, I agree with Dr. Robinson in proceeding tonight with the recommendations as presented, as presented to us. I have read all the red lines. The changes are quite minor. And I appreciate the fact that we need to get these approved by July 1st to be compliant with General Assembly changes. And do know this is one of the most major of the three responsibilities that we have. This budget and, you know, working with the superintendent. So we all take these very seriously. We read these. And frankly, when you read them, you learn something new every time, which is still very good and that's our responsibility. But I do believe that these are so minor in change that they are worth voting on tonight and moving forward.
I, I appreciate that, Ms. Doyle, that, and I just want to, nothing is new about this process. And we, this is the same process that we've been using for some time. And part of what drives at times the number of policies that we receive at this time of year is driven by General Assembly action. So sometimes we have an act of General Assembly and they will pass all kinds of things. And then it's our responsibility and working through the V S B A Policy Service that we subscribe to, they provide those updates to us. It goes through the policy committee. So there's really nothing new about the process. And, you know, duly noted in terms of the number of them, some of you all have been around, remember the old process. And so I think this is vastly improved over that process and it's worked well for us. But I just want you all to understand that in terms of the bulk that we often see this time of year is more so driven by the General Assembly. This is not driven by individual board members or, or for the policy committee for that matter. And the reason we put the committee in place was so that we would not find ourselves having to go through each individual policy over minor changes like this, so that we would have the committee to get the opportunity to review and make recommendations to the board as we do with, with all of our committees.
And if I may make one point of clarification, so at the last, during the work session, it was brought forward to us to review J F C R, which is the, the student conduct. But those were the regulations. So we actually, you don't see it here because we don't adopt the regulations.
The bring your own device and the student, they're on here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we are voting on that.
They're not policies, they're regulations and we don't, we don't-
The code, yeah, that one.
Right, no, no.
The B Y O D is, right.
Okay. Any, anything else from the committee or any additional questions to the committee? Is everyone clear? So as of right now, when we get to the consent agenda item, you know, I will ask if there's anything, including these policies, that anyone would like to hear or have dealt with separately. And at that time, any board member is more than welcome to request that. Any questions at all on the policies that you have before you? All right, the next item, Ms. Fessina?
The next item, so moving from our earlier agenda item 3.02, which is around the Booker T. Washington High School name resolution. The policy committee has reviewed the resolution that was presented to us last month. And after review, we compared it with our naming policies and did not, you know, find that it was, it's in line with our, with our naming policy. However, I do want to reiterate for the community that the name of Booker T. Washington High School was never at risk or up for discussion among the board or the administration for being removed or changed, for that matter. So diff, unlike other schools where we've gone through a renaming process, this is absolutely not the case, nothing that has been discussed for Booker T. Washington High School. So the changes that you'll see before you are, you know, the, the language that was brought forward has not been changed. However, there was language in there that had, that the name Booker T. Washington would forever be the name of the high school. And legally, I think it's important for everyone to understand that legally, this board or any other future board cannot make that determination. So we can't forever make Booker T. Washington High School the name forever. So where it might be our heartfelt wish for Booker T. Washington High School to remain as is named, it is not legally, we cannot legally say that it will never be changed in the future. So that, I, I believe, Ms. Wagner, you had, had raised a question about that earlier.
I do, I did. Mr. Chair and Ms. Fessina, the particular issue that you discussed, whereas the naming of the public school is at the discretion of the local school board and the current school board cannot bind the discretion of future school. I do have a problem with that particular change.
Okay.
Well, let me just point out that our school board attorney, Mr. Cloud, advised us that, that we could, that this type of language about what other school boards can do. So it's the intent of this school board, the heartfelt intent of this school board for the name of Booker T. to be in and to, to last forever. But it may be that the next school board that comes in could make a decision to change that. What we, the, the, what we do here today is not legally minding upon the next school board. So that's, that's the issue. And we did not want to, to convey to the community one thing without them recognizing that another school board coming in could change that. And we could, you know, we have no ability to stop that. So that's, that's, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so, but, you know, our lawyer has advised us that this is the case. So if that's a clarification for you, Ms. Wagner, on why we put that there.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. And I, I think it's up to whatever school board comes after us to make that decision as to whether or not they will or will not accept the name. I think for us, if we are going to, as this school board, accept the name, then that's what we should say. And of course, if another school board comes in and they want to challenge that, then that would be up to them. But this, to me, is very leading and it gives them open-ended to be able to say, well, I can change. And of course, they will know that anyway. I just don't feel like that statement is needed.
So just for clarity then, in, what, yeah, what are you asking us to do this, this evening?
I'm asking that we either table pull or resend until there's more discussion on that area right there because I don't feel like it should be needed in this, in this resolution.
So the statement, whereas the naming of public schools is at the discretion of the local school board and the current school board cannot bind the discretion of future school boards.
Yes.
And that, that-
That's the one, yes.
That's the one that you are suggesting that we remove?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, before we get to the, before we get to the alternative, I just want to put some context around this. And we heard it in the speakers tonight and we've heard it previously. So we, we brought this resolution and Ms. Wagner, I'd like for you to correct me if I'm wrong. But I think we brought the resolution forward because we knew that as we've had conversations around comprehensive C T E and other activities with all the education planning that we talked about, that there's been some concern around whether or not we would repeat our pass and have the scenario in 2018 or 2019 or sometime in the near future, as we know we had in the past, where there were efforts to either physically move the building or to change the name and, and, and so on. And so the recommendation was for us to then come forward with a resolution indicating that it is the spirit and intent of the board to maintain the name Booker T. Washington and all that's described in the, in the resolution. Part of the, the conversation that we've been having with the comprehensive C T E school, and I had shared with the board that, you know, when we decided to ask the administration to consider this shift, we know we have this partnership with the city council, Greater Norfolk Corporation, that's looking at the comprehensive C T E. So hearing those concerns and some of the things that have come forward, you know, I've shared, and I know Dr. Gabriel can also attest to this, we've shared with the group that's been kind of the steering committee looking at the, how do we bring this career, comprehensive career in academic technical high school to Norfolk, the concern about Booker T. So I, I brought with me, on May 16th, we had a meeting. And at that meeting, one of the items that we discussed, at least in my notes, was the, the branding of Booker T. and the importance of the Booker T. name, the history. And frankly, as we've talked about, I know as a board, at least in my mind, the perfect fit of Booker T. with a comprehensive career in technical high school. Then at the June 14th meeting we just had last week, because the committee was in complete agreement with that, at least on the agenda, it was described as the, you know, the Booker T. Washington name has been put in. So I just want to make sure it's clear that, again, I'm comfortable with us adopting a resolution or if we leave it for the next board. I just want to make sure it's clear that from the conversations that we've had as a board, with the administration, with the city of Norfolk, with the Greater Norfolk Corporation, other partners that have been working on this effort for several years, the sentiment is fully embraced about the name Booker T. Washington and all that has been expressed in this resolution. That there's been no conversation at all about doing anything other than maintaining, maintaining that name.
Chairman, I appreciate your remarks and certainly the, the information that you shared was correct. And if we are, if what you say is something that you feel strongly about, then I don't see why that part of the resolution cannot be removed.
I understand, yes, I, I understand your concern. I believe that with consultation with our, with our attorney, the decision to put that in there is really to be as transparent to the public as they read the resolution that the understanding is very clear that while one board may say, you know, it's our heartfelt wish to maintain the name, that a future board may make a different decision. It is not to lead the future board to make an alternative decision. It is just to be very transparent and clear about what our rights are as a, as a board. So that the community also knows the, the process. But what we can do, what my recommendation is, is that, you know, the feedback is taken and we can take it back to the policy committee and we can work with Mr. Cloud on the language and see what we're required or how we might alternatively reword that piece of it. And Dr. Boone, I don't know if you had a comment to me?
I, I did. The, the one comment I had is that factually accurate is the naming of public schools is at discretion of the local school board. And then if the consensus of the board or the direction of the board is to eliminate the last piece of the, of the, that statement, that might get us where we, where the board would want to be. But I also draw you to the, be it further resolved because I think this gets at the essence of what the conversation is. That it is the ardent wish of the current school board of the city of Norfolk, that the historic name and location of this high school be preserved forever in its purest form as Booker T. Washington High School. So even the statement, I, I understand perfectly what, what legal counsel has said, but I think that last statement is clear that while it is in the purview of school boards to name schools, as we've seen a lot of that across particularly the South since the Charlottesville incident and everything else about the names of schools for Confederate personnel, it is school boards who change the names. So that statement is correct, but I think the be it further, so if we eliminate it, the second part of that sentence, that's just, whereas the naming of public schools is at the discretion of the local school board and eliminate and the current school board cannot bind. I think it, especially given the strength of the be it further resolved, that it is the ardent wish of the current school board of the city of Norfolk, that the historic name and location of this high school be preserved forever in its purest form as Booker T. Washington High School. And to me, I think that gets us there in terms of what I'm hearing the board's discussion. So I just offer that for consideration.
Dr. Robinson?
Two points. Number one, I agree with Dr. Boone. I think removing that one phrase out of that last whereas. But even before that, the whereas is, is, is designed just to explain the why for the resolution. The resolution is what we're voting on. We're not voting on the whereses. So it's not, it's not as critical. It's what's written down in the, in the, in the resolve part. And as Dr. Boone pointed out, it's our ardent wish that it states, it doesn't mean that we, that we are forever holding Booker T. Washington's name in place because we don't have that, that, we don't have that, that right to do that. So I would be in favor of removing that phrase from the whereas if it made Ms. Wagner more comfortable.
Okay.
Ms. Wagner and the community.
So-
So where are we, where are we then? Are we, are we making amendments to the resolution in order to vote tonight? Or are we holding this?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
You have the floor, Dr. Robinson?
That we vote on the resolution, vote that we pass this resolution with modifications to the whereas.
Do you have a second?
Wait a minute. Let me, let me get a clear understanding.
It would read, whereas the naming of public schools is at the discretion of the local school-
It would read, whereas the naming of public schools is at the discretion of the local school board.
You're in, right.
You're in.
Com.
Comma.
Comma.
Comma, right.
And whereas this proposal has the endorsement of the alumni community.
Okay, I'll take that as long as we take the other one out.
Okay, okay.
All right, so do I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, further discussion? So I just have, uh, since we're going to fix the whereas's, um, um...
I may accept that as a friendly amendment.
Well, to me, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I think that, you know, what we're doing is, is, is fine. And, um, really, if it was the will of the board to change the name, we would be going through a process to change the name. And what we're doing now is reaffirming our commitment for the name to be the same. I had mentioned this earlier, it's just, um, in the, um, preamble, there was a reference to, um, uh, no other landmarks for Booker T. And I just mentioned that, uh, you know, we have the monument over at Hampton University. So that's all. I just didn't want that. Oh, is there one?
Yeah, there is.
Okay. Current?
It's currently Booker T. Washington Elementary School.
In Suffolk?
Yes.
Okay. But, uh, to me, that's just...
Well, but this says high school.
I don't, I don't want to quibble over that. I'm just saying if we're going to adopt it, then we just should make it, make it accurate. So, but I think it's a great resolution. I think it's an important thing. If it, um, as Ms. Wagner says, builds, uh, additional confidence in the work that we're doing at Booker T., I think it's, it's, it's worth the effort. But I want to make sure that what we're doing here, we're clear on it and that we have, um, um, accurate, accurate information. Dr. Robinson?
I, I support this resolution also, simply because I think, uh, as we transition the current Booker T. Washington High School to the CTE, just like you said, Mr. Jordan, the name Booker T. Washington just fits right in with that, that concept of, of creating high-level, um, career and, and college-ready students. So I, I, I think that, that would fit. I can't, I cannot envision another board coming together to try to change that name, but I, I support this resolution with the modifications.
All right, so, um...
Do you want me to call for a vote? Do you want to vote now?
I just want to make sure that we are clear on what we're doing. Is everyone clear on that?
Yes.
And we're clear on the language? Do we need to have the language?
Yep.
Do we need to have it read or are people clear on it? We, we recognize we are affirming, basically in principle, we are affirming our, uh, desire, intent, and resolve, uh, for, uh, in its purest, purest form, maintaining the name Booker T. Washington High School, uh, at the location that currently exists on Park Avenue. We clear?
Correct.
So I call for a vote on the motion on the floor for the recommendation of the resolution as amended and as seconded.
All right. All right. Mr. Butts, if you called a roll, please.
Ms. Bassine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
All right, uh, let's see. Anything else from the policy committee?
That is all for tonight.
Okay. Uh, next we have four dot zero seven, uh, approval of the consent agenda. You see below you the items that are listed on the consent agenda. Is there, uh, any item that any board member would like to have pulled and discussed separately, from what's currently on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Uh, just a note, we have the school board scholarship applicants that we discussed at the work session on the agenda, also authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent, in addition to the policies that we've discussed. Right. Mr. Butts, if you called a roll, please?
Ms. Bassine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
All right, six dot zero one, uh, update on the budget. Uh, Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Thank you. As we shared, um, at the last meeting, the governor was, signed the final state budget. And what is important in this final state budget is that Norfolk will recognize some additional revenue that therefore requires, um, school board allocation of those funds for specific use. And so what I am, uh, what Ms. Ingram is going to walk us through are the budget amendments and recommendations that we have, the budget adjustments and recommendations that we have tonight for your consideration. Ms. Ingram?
Thank you, school board members. I will be going over with you the general assembly actions and impact you have on the budget that you passed in, I think, May 30th, from, um, adjusting to the city council appropriation. Based on the general assembly's budget, the major changes came in our incentive funds category, where we are receiving $1.8 million, but then lottery funds went down, uh, $500,000 for a net increase to our operating budget of, um, $1.2 million. So with that, next slide. These are the recommendations that the superintendent is putting before the board as to how to allocate those fundings. First on there is to restore the health and wellness coordinator position, to add the GPSs for school buses to the budget, to add a position for digital learning administrator, to add four behavioral specialists to the budget for a total of seven, to add three teachers at crossroads for the six-eight component, to add a student, school activity fund auditor, increase the per pupil allocation for supplies, increase the substitute allocation for teachers and assistants, to add another athletic trainer, and to add a position for employee relations manager. So with the addition of those positions, we will use up the $1.2 million. Therefore, our total budget would be $329,613,938 for the operating budget.
And if I may, Mr. Jordan and board, provide a little context around a few of these. As you recall, uh, when we met on May 30th, the recommendation to balance the budget, um... But the school board had requested $6.2 million in additional money from the city. We received $5 million for operating. And so our goal was to balance that. We recommended, um, eliminating the health and wellness coordinator position and the GPSs for buses, but we also said, should we receive additional money, those would be the first things that we would restore. And so this, this recognizes that. In our work with the behavioral, uh, the behavioral specialists for schools, we, you know, we've done extensive conversations around those, and you all ask us the question, well, would you need more? And we said absolutely, but we wanted to start what we thought was reasonable, given the funds we had. So this allows us to, to include, uh, additional behavioral specialists. The crossroads, uh, six-eight component deals with, and even in the earlier conversation we had today with Tracy Richter, we talk about a K-8 school and what does the middle school programming look like. And so we've been doing that on a shoestring piece, and we were fortunate enough to have a couple of teachers that had multiple endorsements. Well, one of those teachers is leaving, and so now we realize we have a big gap. And so we have to be able to address the licensure that's needed to complement the six-eight, um, component. The school activity fund auditor, you will recall, we've included school activity funds in our annual, um, comprehensive audit that, you know, we are arm of with the city. And there's a lot more that we could be doing with that if we had a person that could look at, do work with those throughout the year. So that's the purpose for that one. I, I, again, I think it, it speaks, um, clearly, the increase in the per pupil allocation for supplies, putting more money for schools to be able to use for materials and supplies, and also, uh, increasing our substitute allocation so that we aren't always in a, in a jam with that as we close out the school year. The athletic trainer piece is the, um, as you recall, Old Dominion is shifting its program, and so they're, they are phasing out where we've been able to, uh, access those graduate students who are part of that program for athletic training. And so each year, we've only been able to add one at a time. This will add an additional one, and then we would just have one high school left that doesn't have an athletic trainer, and that would get us to that full complement. And the employees, employee relations manager deals with, um... The, the dealing with need for, sometimes for investigations, the, um, direct services, but those things beyond hiring, where we sometimes have to have conversations with, with staff who need particular support, and needs, this, this position would allow us to accomplish that. And digital learning goes, I didn't mean to skip that one. Again, is our focus on what we're doing to leverage technology, not just for technology's sake, but really to be that place of how we change the dynamic, dynamics within our classrooms and everything that we're working on, such that, uh, we see the, the added benefit of technology and not just being something else in the classroom. So I just wanted to provide some context for the recommendations that we've made.
Ms. Bassine?
In assessing, you know, other positions or, uh, that could possibly be added, we've talked about having a grant writer, um, you know, for, uh, and I'm just curious how that weighed into the, these decisions?
There's some information that I'll be sending to the board relative to the grant writing position, grant writer position, but I am looking to, uh, merge that with the clerk's position, so that it is a full-time clerk and grant writer's position, uh, combined, because, you know, the clerk responsibilities, for a long time Norfolk did not have a full-time clerk. That individual also had multiple response, had other responsibilities. Pair that along with maintaining a deputy, um, clerk would allow us to meet the full complement of the board's needs, and also have that dedicated person that will focus on grant writing, grant acquisition.
Dr. Gabriel?
Dr. Boone, the school activity fund auditor, they're, um, they're going to look at efficiencies or savings for the, for the school activities fund?
They're going to look at our compliance and, and how, making sure that school activity funds are being managed in, in the proper way, with all the fiduciary responsibilities, and not just the annual sampling of school activity funds that we're able to accomplish through our full audit.
And if I could comment on that, um, Mr. Haywood and I actually met with our auditors today who are new to the city and to ourselves called CLA. And we had a discussion regarding, um, school activity funds and how they're going to approach reviewing those this year. And KPMG previously was very much focused on school activities funds and how they are handled. And the recommendation of both of those entities has been that we need to have somebody in the division who has oversight and can provide good guidance and management to those who manage that at the local levels of the schools. So this is really something in keeping with what our auditors have recommended and our new auditor today even recommended to Mr. Haywood and I. So I was thrilled to be able to say to her, I just saw a presentation that we're going to see tonight that has this position in place. So she was pleased to, to hear this.
I might also add that, um, Norfolk Public Schools, over the years, have had an outstanding audit on school, um, the school, uh, activity funds. There may be small discrepancies, but, um, our, our former auditor, uh, KMPG, I believe it is, has always said that, uh, we have been doing a good job with that. So I, I want to point out that the reason why we would have a fun auditor is because that is a hotspot for auditing, and, um, we want to, we want to maintain that good record that we have had in that area.
And in fact, the auditor said that we're going to do a sampling this year, but next year they intended to do a full audit of all school activity funds, in addition to what this school activity fund auditor would do. So we basically have two layers of review, which I think is great.
Okay.
Ingram?
Are there any other?
Well, so I know we have, you're asking us to, uh, do a vote. Are you going to, um...
The next slide?
The next slide will show what the total funding source for the school district is to include the general operating budget of $329,613,938. We have received appropriation from the city for all of these others, the grants and special programs, the school nutrition services, and the capital improvement funds of $7 million. I think another part of the agenda is talking about potential projects for the CIP piece.
Right, but I want to make sure that, uh, board is, sees the four items, and if there are any, any additional questions before we take action?
And if I may, once the board has adopted, we will have to ask the city, um, to do its ordinance for these, for the additional funds in the final, but you will have, um, already approved the utilization, the, for those funds. And so we'd just be merely asking the city for an ordinance to approve those additional state funds.
Any additional questions on what's been presented to us? Hearing none, uh, is there a motion for us to approve the, uh, uh...
Operating fund first?
You want to do them separately?
You have to do, because there's an amendment to the total of the operating budget, we need a, a vote on the operating budget, and then we can do the total of the funds.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, so I, I'll, I'll do the operating.
Please.
Uh, I make a motion to adopt the operating fund as presented for $329,613,938 for the fiscal year 2018-19.
Do I have a second?
A second motion?
Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Reverend Haywood. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Butts, if you would call the roll?
Ms. Bassine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
So now we just need a motion on the total?
On the remaining?
On the entire thing?
Right, which includes the, uh, positions that, uh, been recommended to us that we've just discussed on the grand total. Is there a motion to that effect?
I move that we adopt the 2019 budget as presented, uh, including the operating fund, grants and special programs, school nutrition services, and capital improvement. Right, grand total of $393,813,938.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Gabriel, seconded by Mrs. Doyle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Butts, if you called a roll, please?
Ms. Bassine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
That's a lot of money. And as I head off the board, I want to admonish the current board members and the future board members to make sure we look at that amount of money and see how best we can spend that money more efficiently and more effectively to get a, a better return on our investment. But I vote for the, the amendment.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Uh, next item, six dot zero two, uh, CIP budget planning?
Yes.
Dr. Boone?
Um, Ms. Ingram will walk us through this one also, but as you recall, w- we, we are, we do have this year, uh, additional CIP for the deferred maintenance opportunity, uh, work. And even in our earlier work session, we talked about the fact that the facility condition index addressed the, um, needing $16 million annually. So, um, here's what, um, Ms. Ingram, uh, Mr. Johnson, and members of the team are presenting for the board's information and consideration as we plan for the next school year. So Ms. Ingram?
Okay. Um, for the 2019 city appropriation for the CIP, it was the two components. Previously, they have been giving us a million dollars that we run through the operating budget to, for bus replacements. What we have been requesting is that they actually put it into an appropriation, and we move it over into the CIP budget. So the first million of the $7 million for school bus replacements, each year we've been getting, and we've been able to replace... year we've been getting, and we've been able to replace ten to twelve buses, which is very small considering the aging of our current fleet. So we have that. And then the actual deferred maintenance components is six million dollars, which is four million more than what we got this year. So I just wanted to point out that we did have the facilities condition assessments that were completed and was reported to the board, which was talked about at the earlier session, and that the estimated annual expenditure necessary for capital renewal replacements was six, sixteen point one million dollars, I'm sorry, and twenty eighteen dollars. So the committee got together, we were being mindful that pending school board action on what was being proposed tonight or recommendation, but we still went forth to compile a list of potential projects, how to spend the six million dollars. So the total projects that were identified totaled like fifteen point four million dollars. We came up with like seven point five million in roofing projects, four point one million in paving projects, three million dollars in chillers and ventilators, and about seven hundred and fifty thousand boilers, control shop, electrical and plumbing. A lot of, as you know, a lot of our systems are outdated, so we have dedicated staff who has just been doing the best they can to keep it going. And I think I had shared with you all earlier about the list that we had about chillers and how they went offline, the exact same order that Mr. Pucher had given to us. So of the projects that we had, this is how we prioritize them. We looked at the potential safety, structural, environmental, and educational impact, and underneath that category, there is also EPA mandate that as of January one, 2020, we, it'll be illegal to manufacture or import units with R22 Freon, and that's technical stuff, I don't understand, Danny can talk to you about it. And we really need to phase out all that we have in the system. And we currently have like fourteen of those systems throughout NPS. So in the current proposal, we would be trying to phase out some of those old units that won't be maintained and to be in compliance with regulations. So these are the projects that are being recommended. Oops, I'm sorry, I didn't name the other criteria. Back up one. We also looked at the severity of the current condition of equipment of the surface. We looked at the probability of frequency of failure. We are tracking all the repairs in our system and facility called Scoo Doo, and it tracks the repairs that we have been making. We look at the available repair options. We also looked at the replacement and repair cost comparison, and we also looked at the projected life cycle of existing equipment. So those are what we considered when we prioritize what we are recommending today. So of the roofing projects, it's for Willett Elementary School to complete roof replacement, the Bellmore Complex to complete a replacement there, Granby Elementary School to reseal the roof, and over to the right is the cost, estimated cost to do those jobs.
Excuse me, Bellmore Complex?
That's the facility complex.
And child nutrition.
And child nutrition.
That's the building, right, that houses child nutrition and facilities.
Okay.
The electrical projects at Bogertie, Washington to replace the auditorium lighting, at Azalea Gardens Middle School to replace their auditory lighting, and at Lake Taylor High School and NTC to replace the outside pole lighting, and those are the costs for that. Under the HVAC system, here again, that's what we had been talking about, to replace the chiller at Taylor Elementary, a chiller replacement at the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, chiller replacement at Ruffner, Blair Middle School replaced an Old York chiller, the one I had mentioned about earlier, at Norview High School replaced two, a number two York chiller, and at Lake Taylor Middle School to replace a cooling tower. One thing I would like to point out here, you see a lot of chiller replacement because they are coming offline, but we also have in 2019 proposal and in twenty eighteen dollars for chiller replacement, and so the idea is that going out to get bids with economies of scale, the more units we can place, we get a better price. So with those savings, then we can then turn around and do additional replacement. I think a couple of years ago, we did that, and with four chillers, and we saved like a quarter of a million dollars. So the goal here is to do the same thing here, to save the district money and then be able to repurpose those dollars to continue the replacement cycle there. Okay, and HVAC controls at Academy of Discovery at Lakewood, there are some digital control upgrades, Norview Middle School, control panel upgrades, and at paving, I don't know whether you have visited our transportation bus parking lot, we have some serious craters out there, I don't know what else to call them.
Craters.
I mean, yeah, they're craters. And NTC, we wanted to replace, resurfaced the bus parking lots there, and at Lake Taylor High School, the bus loop and storm drain repairs. So the total of those projects is totaled to six million dollars, and that is how we came up with those recommendations.
Ms. Doyle?
So how quickly can we put out to bid some of these projects so they can be done prior to this next school year?
When the money is available and we get through the closing cycle, it'll be available July one, and then we, the facilities people can get with our purchasing people, they pull together the specs and get it as soon as possible.
Because I know we don't like often to put a roof on while children are learning and have instruction going on in a school year, but if that's the case, that's another nine months, so are we going to accelerate some of this work?
The chiller work, those things that have a different design model, you know, what the specs are for it is different. Roofing usually has to happen in several phases. You have to do a design for the roof initially before you can even get into bidding. And so oftentimes, what we try to do with roofing projects that occur at this point in the year, where we get funding at this point, is to move into the design phase so that the very last day of school, we can begin to do that work, and the money is then encumbered to finish during the next summer. So that would be our goal for the total roof replacements. But the chiller work, as you recall, last summer when we replaced the chiller at Bogertie and at Tanner's Creek, I think it was, we were able to do those fairly quickly in the summer, because again, it was the idea of what are the specs for the individual schools, what size unit, what type of unit, and we were able to get most of those online by the beginning of school.
And the same with the electrical projects, will we get those lightings done, do you think?
Mr. Johnson is saying yes.
Mr. Johnson is here from facilities, he can ask the check.
Come to the podium, please.
We got to do this.
Thank you. The electrical projects are pretty much service contracts.
Okay.
So we don't have to do a lot of design or anything to that nature. We've already visited the auditorium projects at Bogertie and Azalea, so we are familiar with what we need to do there, and we can get those moved, started in probably a couple of weeks' time, to be honest with you.
Dr. Robinson?
Actually, just one more question. So I see that this is a six million plus one for this 18-19 year. Are we going to plan out the next few years of capital maintenance, knowing that we're going to get X amount from the city?
Well, I was going to say, that goes back, one, this year is an anomaly.
Yes, of having six plus one.
Of having the six, the plus one, the one has been there.
It's the bus, yeah.
That's the bus, and that's another conversation, because as Ms. Ingram said, we're only able to replace ten to twelve buses annually, and we're getting behind on that.
Yeah.
Because of the number of buses we have. The, when you go back in the earlier part of the four, page four of the slides, pending board action from the educational planning recommendations will help us to determine then what would be the next set of projects we work on, because certainly, we have the facility condition index report.
Right.
But if we are going to make some significant movement in the next two to four years, we may want to do a different solution than the more expensive, more comprehensive solution for some of those facilities.
So I asked the question knowing the answer, but I wanted the public to know that we're not planning just one year out, not thinking about the future. We are thinking about the future, but in concert with our educational planning, the FCI, and many other things. But I just wanted that to be very clear to all, that we are thinking long-term, but this year, we're putting the plan in place with the tangibles that we're doing under this year. Thank you.
I mean, one of the children, what was it, Charlton?
Charlton.
Went out next to the last day of school.
Yes.
I mean, and that was on the list too, so they, it's to the point where we just can't keep them going anymore, so, yeah. Tried to get as many of them changed and replaced before school opens in the fall.
I was about to ask Dr. Robinson or Dr. Gabriel, as members of the facilities committee, anything you all want to add, add to the discussion at this point?
Just that it's nice to have, you know, an extra four million dollars to spend on these projects. I am a little concerned that we're spending a third of it on paving. My feeling is we stay warm, we stay dry, we stay cool, we stay safe. And I know there's craters out there in the bus parking lot, but I'd almost, I personally, and again, I don't want to go below the line, trust you all in your judgment, but if we could phase those projects through over the next few years, rather than try to knock them all out this year, and repurpose some of those dollars into some of those other projects, because our needs are really great. I mean, we try to plan out for years in advance, just something, that's just my opinion.
And respectfully, Dr. Robinson, the paving has been punted so many times, and again, if you haven't been out there, we're really finding a tough time being able to navigate the buses through the transportation yard because of how close the potholes, the craters are to each other, and so then we get into the potential of damaging steering equipment, wheels, and all of that. And so while we are trying to replace the buses, and you know, we've been able, we had that one EPA grant that allowed us to, the city worked with us and was very fortunate, we were very fortunate, they advanced the one million dollars that allowed us then to get that grant, and we received an additional two hundred thousand, which allowed us to get two more buses. And so I don't disagree with anything that you're saying, and we are trying to leverage with projects we're doing this year in terms of chillers and things, but if we don't do something with that lot, then we're going to risk damaging the expensive bus equipment that we're replacing. And when those are offline, then we know the challenge around that in terms of bus routes running late and those things.
Can I add a piece, Dr. Boone? We actually went through the transportation and NTC lots and did temporary patches there, but they don't hold up when you get rainy weather and so forth, they wash right back out, so we're back at the same point we were before.
All right, any additional questions for the team here? I'll just ask for one point of clarification, if you would, Dr. Boone, the, as we're dealing with the CIP here, word on the street is, is that we have money for a new Maury High School and have money for other things. Can you speak to again what we were fortunate that the city council took action on in terms of providing us additional resources, but can you also just put in context again what our needs are versus the resources that we have, and just kind of help address some of that?
The facility condition index indicated, looked at all of our schools that were fifteen-plus years old, and looked at the lifespan of the critical systems in those buildings and everything, and based on today's dollars and the number of schools that we had that were fifteen years plus, it would take us one billion dollars, one billion would it be, to replace all of the schools that we have currently on that list. Additionally, in, when we looked at the Maury Ed specs, as I stated two weeks ago when we presented, you build a school from the inside out, and so the educational planning work that went on addresses how we maximize the educational spaces going forward, and what would that look like as we think about our current learners and our future learners, and how do we use academic space, and how we potentially allow for expansion of the medical specialty program and all of that. If you look at the presentation that was provided to the board two weeks ago, it states repair, renovate, or replace. It says the same thing for Bogertie, renovate or replace. There's been no decision made as to what would happen at either place. Even this evening in the work session prior to the business meeting, Mr. Richter indicated that we, there's a next level of feasibility study where we need to look at the building condition that will begin to drive what would happen going forward. So no money has been allocated for any construction or renovation of Maury High School. In the city's adopted FY19 budget, this money for this, these additional four million dollars for deferred maintenance projects were, that allows us to address deferred maintenance, but these aren't capital replacement or building funds. Also in the city's budget, with the sale of the Lambus Point Golf Course and the SWIFT modeling for dealing with storm water, it's anticipated that the city expects to provide to the Norfolk School Board fifteen million dollars toward capital renovation or replacement. Those funds have not been earmarked for any projects at this point, and as we think about, and you think about the earlier conversations, what it takes to build a school, fifteen million dollars gets us about a third of a school. And so at this point, there have been no funds allocated for any of the educational planning options and opportunities that have been presented to the board. As we continue the work and bring the community voice into how we determine the priorities, what that work will look like, then we will move forward with being able to say to council, these are the projects that we wish to advance, these are the costs, and asking them to support that. But at this point, we do not have any money for renovation or rehabilitate, or new construction at Maury, at Bogertie, and any other school in the district. We are finishing the fifth of the five PPEA projects, and that's Camp Allen Elementary School. I believe roughly ninety percent of that school cost is being covered, borne by the Department of Defense, and the other portion is the local money. But that's the last construction project, major construction project, that has been funded to this date.
Any other questions on this presentation? All right, on to item six dot zero three, monthly financial reports. Dr. Boone, Ms. Ingram?
Ms. Ingram.
Ms. Ingram?
Okay. I will be giving you the highlights of our financial report at the end of May, 31st, 2018, which is our 11th counting period. Revenue received as of the end of May was two hundred and eighty-eight point four million dollars, or eighty-eight point seven percent of our total budget, and this compares to eighty-seven point three percent for the same time period in 2017, and eighty-seven point four percent in fiscal year 2016. On the expenditure side, as of the end of May, our expenditures totaled two hundred and seventy-seven, or two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars, or eighty-five point five percent of our budget, and that compares to eighty-seven point three percent for the same time period in 2017, and ninety point three percent in fiscal year 2016. Our total incommances were four point three million dollars, and a summary of budget transfers, fifty thousand or greater, has been attached for your review. And then behind that is another way of presenting our financial statement for the operating budget and for child nutrition services. Are there any questions?
Questions? Okay, Dr. Gabriel has some.
Okay, I had a question about one of the line items further down to the, oh, thank you, yeah. What is?
When people leave the district and they, you pay out their sick leave, or retire, if they're retirement, they get sick leave pay plus their vacation pay, but if they leave, they get their unused vacation pay.
Then in the, in the budget transfers, there were a large portion of them.
Yes.
Sure, we can. As you recall, due to the teacher shortage, we had a number of vacant positions that were filled by law. positions that were filled by long-term subs this year. And so these classroom teacher dollars represent those ones that contract, contracts weren't able to be offered to. So that's where those funds have come from. Our goal, of course, is to fill classrooms, but as you know, majority of those were elementary vacancies. And as you recall, Region Two, our biggest shortages in elementary teachers. And so we covered, you know, we paid, we paid long-term subs, we used some of that classroom teacher money to cover the sub costs for that. But the cost for a long-term sub versus cost for a contracted teacher is very different.
With the amount that we've been able to apply to other funds, is there anything that you would do differently?
Again, we, we allocated the number of classroom teachers we felt we needed based on enrollment. So it wasn't a poor planning piece. We can document every vacancy for an approved position, but we just didn't have the, the contracted personnel to fill those with.
And in part of the analysis as well, we look at, when we do projections and have those attrition savings, or savings for unfilled positions. It's ironic that we, we also pulled the number of vacancies that we have, and then look at that times what we budgeted for those positions, and we were right on target this year. So had we filled every position that we budgeted for, we wouldn't have any attrition savings at the end of the year to do some of the much-needed things that oftentimes does not get funded.
I did notice also that this is extraordinary, that in my five years on the board, I've never seen us have to do a transfer of this amount at the end of the year because of the vacancies. So I think it's just notable for the community to realize that, that this is not common, but it's becoming a growing trend as a result of our teacher shortage. Second point, are we going to have any other opportunity for attrition of any nature that we're going to have money left over at the end of the fiscal year that we're then going to go to the city and say, may we spend on X, Y, and Z? Or will we spend all that we have been given through June thirty?
There's the possibility that there will some, be money left in fund balance, that then we would then go and ask the city to reappropriate.
And when will we know that, and when will we discuss that?
Typically, we wait until the audit is finished, to get the audited fund balance, that we know everything is cleared properly. And then we will typically go after we do that. So it'll probably be around January, because typically the audit is done by the end of November, December, and then they present to the board what the findings are, or report that we had a good, clean audit, and I'm not going to say findings. And after that, whatever fund balance is left, then we will go to the city and ask for a reappropriation.
Do we have an estimate of what that might be?
Not yet, because we, again, we have to go in and do the, the full amount in terms of encumbrances for teachers with the twelve months pay and all of that. But I also want to remind the board, while we haven't gone to council in the last couple of years to seek a reappropriation directly, has been because we were u, we were forced to use balances as part of the budget balancing strategy, which kept us with the structural imbalance going forward. This is the first budget where we are not using one-time funds left from, from the audited fund balance in order to close the gap for the budget. So we've now, that's something we've been able to sunset over these last three budgets and, and working with the city. But that was, you all remember, it was six million dollars when that first got here. Then we got it down to three. And the FY nineteen budget is not built on one-time unexpendable funds that the council, the city manager then recommends we use to balance our budget. So that's why we see some differences here. And so the, the whole idea of what we do, again, with these significant transfers here, we're trying to use what we have.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
If, if I just may point out that that's usually only one or two percent of the entire budget. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. But again, it's, when you consider all the different payment categories that we have, there's going to be, it's good that we have a little bit left over money. It's better be, better than the other way, being in deficit spending, so.
The other way won't be good.
Yes, exactly.
No, that's not allowed.
That's not allowed.
No, I know it's not allowed. That's why I said it wouldn't be a good thing. So it's, it, it has to be built into the system. So I understand. I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're not using any carryforward funds this year.
Ms. Bassin?
And, you know, last, last month, you know, I think similar questions came up. And I think, you know, I had the same question today as well. When we see the amount transferred from classroom teachers, I think if we can strengthen our justifications too, to, to explain that, and that might also help with our understanding of, of what and why the transfers are being made.
Anyone else? So we have the, finish Ms. Ingram?
That's it. Yes, sir.
All right. So we have the monthly financials report for May. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the budget as presented, the financial report as, as presented.
I have a motion on the monthly financial reports. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Butts, if you call the roll, please. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Six dot zero four, student representative to the school board. Dr. Boone?
This is, has been a very fun opportunity each year since the board approved having a student representative to the school board. And as we've celebrated Arturo's service and Andrew's service this year, I'm certainly pleased to be able to recommend the student representative and alternate for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Recommending Mr. Jalen Mitchell of Bogota T. Washington High School, and a student at the Governor's School for the Arts as the student representative to the board, and Shaffer Shelton, Catherine Shaffer Shelton, as the alternate, a student at Granby High School. And it's tough. Okay, I want to tell you, I, I have the, the, there's one level of interviews that Mr. Coleman and team conduct, and then I have the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with the candidates. And it's always so tough. But these are my recommendations this year.
All right. We've received the recommendation from Dr. Boone. Is there a motion to accept? Do they have a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Gabriel, second by Mrs. Doyle. Any further discussion or questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Butts, if you call the roll, please. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Six dot zero five, federal grants application, Title One, of course, with this. And the next vote, we discussed these at our work session. But, Dr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Yes, we, we presented these to the board two weeks ago, answered questions and everything. And this is now ready for the board's approval for submission.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the federal grants application for Title One?
I move that we approve the federal grants application for Title One as proposed.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Moved by Mrs. Doyle, seconded by Reverend Haywood. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Butts, if you call the roll, please. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Six dot zero six, federal grants applications titles two through four.
Same thing. These were presented at our last meeting for discussion and consideration. They are now, we are recommending they be approved for submission to the Virginia Department of Education.
All right. Do they have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the federal grant applications for titles two, three, and four as proposed.
Do they have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Yeah, it's getting me. Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Ms. Wagner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Butts, if you call the roll. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Six dot zero seven, matters of the board. We have a walk-on item. The school board completed its annual evaluation with Dr. Boone. There's a recommendation as part of that evaluation to increase Dr. Boone's salary by two percent, which would bring from the base of two hundred and twenty-four thousand to a total of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Is there a motion to that effect?
I recommend that we increase Dr. Boone's salary by two percent.
All right. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All right. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Butts, if you call the roll, please. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Nay.
Dr. Gabriel?
Nay.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Nay.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. All right. Other matters of the board. Was there anything else we're supposed to?
Do you want to just do a quick update on the audit discussion we had?
Yeah, I was going to go down and see if, if you'd like to, since you all had the audit meeting, if you'd like to do it now. That's fine.
So, Ms. Ingram, please correct us if we're wrong, but Mr. Haywood and I met today with our new auditors, a company called CLA, and they wanted to do a discussion, have a, a brief discussion with the two folks on the board that serve on the Audit Committee, which is Mr. Haywood and myself. So we had a good thirty, thirty-five minute conversation. And I look forward to working with them. They're going to be working with the city, ourselves, and NRHA, if I'm not mistaken. EDA. Okay. So they audit three entities within the city, and it's a city-wide contract. And that RFP was put out, and CLA was selected. So it was a good discussion. And so moving forward, when the new board is constituted, there'll be members that serve on the Audit Committee that will carry this work forward. But it was a good conversation, and I think they asked some very good questions, and I think that we're in good hands. Anything else you would say?
Yes. This particular accounting firm represents Virginia Beach, Loudoun County, Alexandria School Board, School, Baltimore, Richmond, and Arlington, among others. So they have extensive experience in working with school boards. One of the encouraging things about meeting with Mrs. Coleman is her name, from Clifton, Lawson, and Allen. She indicated that because they have this kind of experience with boards and with auditing schools, they, they would be able to advise us on areas that, and problem areas that they have seen in other school boards, to help our school board to avoid some of these same areas. I recommend, recommended to her that we, we would, as a school board, probably be interested in having her do some training with school boards, and not just with the two school board representatives who would be appointed there. And of course, she was very thrilled to hear that, because I think that it's important for us as a whole board to be able to understand what the auditor does. And so I thought it was a very fruitful discussion. She wanted to interview us as the two school board members who represent the Audit Committee. The other thing that I noticed about her discussion is she's not operating at a thirty thousand feet level. She's right down there in the weeds, and she's, she's going to be, for want of a better word, in your face, which, which, which is a good thing. Not that we, as a school board, have anything that we, we are attempting to hide. In fact, you know, Norfolk Public Schools has had excellent audits and has an excellent tradition in that area. And I think that Mrs. Coleman will help us to continue in that tradition.
Any other committee reports? All right. Hearing none. Any additional comments from the board? Arturo, Mr. Mendoza, would you like to make any comments at this time?
No. I was going to press the button.
All right. Thank you, sir. Congratulations again on your scholarship and good luck at Stanford. All right. Ms. Wagner?
Well, this is my final sit, time to sit at this board. And it has been a unique and interesting experience. I hope that I have added something in terms of making it a better school board. I look forward to the new school board coming in, and I will not be sitting here, but I will still be on the ground, running, working with, to make sure that the best becomes better. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I appreciate the support. And I am signing off.
Ms. Doyle?
So this might be just truly the record. Mr. Haywood and I got here about one-thirty. So we're now facing almost an eight-hour day here. So we've had long days in training before, but I think this takes the cake, actually, with meetings. So it's ironic that it's the last day that I serve here. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve. I truly am humbled to have been selected to serve now five years. And I look forward to taking the school board with me. I am not leaving it behind as I move across the street to City Hall and to serve on City Council. So I look forward to taking what I've learned with me and being your partner moving forward in education. That was one of my priorities when I was campaigning, and it remains a very high priority for me. I want to thank Dr. Boone and her leadership in the division. You've made this division strong, you have stabilized it, and we are moving in the right direction, and I'm very, very appreciative. I'd also like to thank the administration. These folks here that sit right up here work very, very hard. We were here eight hours, you were here longer too, I know that. And you work summers, nights, weekends, you're always available to us. So I really commend the efforts that you have. And I know you're doing it because you really have a passion for the work that you do. So for those in administration, I want to say thank you. And then I also want to thank the folks that are in the schools every day, the teachers, the custodians, the principals. They're the ones that make this division tick. They're the ones that make our students successful and allow our students to reach their fullest potential. And that's what make Norf, that's what makes Norfolk Public Schools great. And so again, I'm just proud to have been able to serve and have the ability to contribute in a small way, and I look forward to continuing to do so. I also just want to thank my colleagues on the board. It's been a pleasure to serve with you all for these years. You know, we've had a great time together. We've been through some good opportunities, and we've learned a lot from each other. And I think we appreciate each other's differences and perspectives, and I think that makes for a strong board. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and I thank the community for their willingness to allow me to serve, and I look forward to continuing to do so in the years to come.
Reverend Haywood?
I've been on the board six years. I did not pursue this appointment. I, I really, you know, God really put me on the board, because I was minding my own business and the, and, and, and the mayor rolled up on me one day and rolled down, in a dark SUV, and rolled down his window and said, you know, I'd, I'd like to consider you for appointment for school board. And I said, oh, okay. And I said to myself, it'll never happen, you know. But I'm on the school board. And then in addition to that, my, my name was put in a hat after two terms, and I got pulled. You know, I got selected. So I, and I've always said that, you know, that these types of things, you know, that God is in this. And so I've depended upon God on quite a bit to be a member of the school board. And God has given wisdom to me. He's, he's guided me and directed me. He's helped me. But you know, part of that has to do with people. And so, you know, I came on the school board with Mr. Jordan and with Noel, and we've, we've developed close relationships. We don't always agree with one another, and we fight one another. But, you know, I really appreciate, and in particular, the school board chairs that we've had. Mr. Jordan has been an outstanding school board member, and he has in his genes, he must, he was made for this in many ways. And he's helped me a lot, and I'm, I'm very thankful for that. But that would be true of each school board member, that we've worked together in many ways. And I'm real thankful for the advice that I've gotten from all of the school board members. And I think that one of our best decisions on the board was to hire Dr. Boone. And I'm, I'm really grateful that she's here, and I can see that the school is, the, the battleship is turning, and we're headed in the right direction. And it also has been a great pleasure of mine to get to know the, the executives who work for the school board who are sitting here in front of us, and from the many things I've learned from them. You know, we've made some dumb mistakes on the school board, but...
Don't quote that. Don't quote that.
But, but you know, God has been gracious, and people have been gracious in, in helping us in all of this. So I'm real thankful for having been able to serve. I've learned a lot serving on the school board. And, you know, I've been humbled in my position. I also want to say that I, I, you know... And um, you know, I've been humbled in my position. I also want to say that I, I, you know, um, I know that Janelle Banks is not here, but I want to thank Janelle for the help that she's given me personally and many, many times. And so she's, she's not present, but I want to say thank you, Janelle. And um, so um, you know, it's been good serving and um, I'm gonna be praying for you guys because y'all gonna need a lot of prayer. Thank you.
Alright, so if I could, to preserve the marriage of Mr. Haywood and his wife, I think you should acknowledge that Shirley is here tonight in support of you and that we love Shirley.
My good wife. See that woman over there?
Yes.
My wife of forty-one years.
That's a coup.
Thank you, Shirley. This is the first time that she's attended a school board meeting. So, so now she knows, she knows a little bit about what's going on.
Dr. Robinson?
Uh, this is a bittersweet moment. Um, seven years, it's a long time to be on the school board. I think back to when I started uh, seven years ago, how little I knew, or how much I thought I knew and then realized very quickly how little I knew. Um, I, I, I tried to approach my, my tenure on the school board thinking of Mark Twain. Better to keep your mouth closed and be thought of fool than open it and remove all doubt. But I've had varied success with that, so. Yeah, I, I. Ms. Doyle, did you take my notes? You started your thi-, and I just checked off everything I was gonna say, so, very good. I don't have to say anything else other than it's been a real, uh, a wonderful opportunity and a privilege to be here and I'm very grateful for the support that I've received at all levels from, from the superintendent's office, Dr. Boone, you've, you've given us great leadership to your team. Um, everybody's been very helpful and, and always wanting to work in a collaborative effort. Um, I, I want to thank the building principals, administration, and, and the faculty because they've always welcomed me in the schools and, and uh, have always uh, tried to, to um, help me understand the, the needs of, of Norfolk Public Schools and, and um, and how we can best help them. Uh, I'm grateful uh, to my fellow school board members, uh, both past and present. It's truly been a collaborative effort. As been previously mentioned, we don't always agree, but we um, for the very most part, uh, are not disagreeable. Really well. Uh, and I hope that for the best for the incoming school board members that uh, they realize that you're part of a team and, and that you, you're only as strong as the team. I want you to remember that Norfolk is a good school district. Don't let anybody ever tell you differently. We have challenges, we have things that we have to work on and, and we'll never be, perfection is unattainable, but if we keep striving for it, we'll get to it. And I, and I think of Stephen Covey a lot and, and, and uh, we have our circle of concern and there's all these things out in the communities and out in the world that we don't really have any influence over, but we have our circle of influence is what we say, think, and do. And I um, leave hoping that uh, we continue to focus on that circle of influence and, and that's how we affect our circle of concern. But thank you very much.
Ms. Bassine?
Well, it's been a great three years that I've had the opportunity to serve with you four who um, will now be taking on new opportunities and enjoying some newfound freedom um, in some ways. It has been uh, humbling. Uh, this is a humbling experience overall. Um, you think you know things when you, when you join, but there's so much, um, and I, I will quote you from watching an interview before I was on the board, something that uh, Dr. Robinson said, that it's like drinking from a fire hose. And, and it is. So I know there's two new board members uh, coming on that I want to acknowledge too and I'm very excited to be working with you as well. Um, and while that may be true, it is um, it is a rewarding experience. It's a challenging but rewarding experience. Um, and it's been great uh, being able to work with the six of you. Um, I want to thank the administration, Dr. Boone, um, for the great work that we've done over the last few years and of course, our teachers who've ended another good school year. Um, I hope they're enjoying the beginning of their summer, which I know is not really summer. I know some of them are probably already thinking about future lesson plans and um, uh, teaching summer school and uh, boatload of other activities in the best interest of children. So I want to thank them, our principals, and of course, um, our students and families. So. Thank you all. Have a wonderful summer and we will be here all summer long.
Yes. Dr. Gabriel?
To the four of you all who are um, leaving, this is a, an exceptionally intelligent uh, group of folks here, but you all have led with your hearts first and sometimes that has brought about some interesting discussions that we've had. But you're extremely passionate and I'm gonna miss that uh, in our discussions. So I'm gonna go a little off uh, off the road here and individually just make a few comments about each of you. So Ms. Wagner, um, she's a great baker. Uh, so not only is she spicy on the board, but uh, she also makes some pretty mean cakes. And we're gonna miss that because she would treat us during our birthdays to our own special cake or special occasion. So I'm gonna miss you for that.
The cakes can still come though.
She might have something special in her cake.
Don't tell my secret.
I'm still here.
Ms. Doyle, uh, she has um, really taken charge to get uh, our s-, our school division on a very well-respected playing field as far as our legislative uh, concerns go. And I can't thank you enough for that because now we have our delegates and senators wanting to come to our schools and see our students and visit our teachers and they're putting forth legislation that's gonna help our students and really understand the situations that we're dealing with and reward progress versus um, continuously uh, stating uh, items about our school division that just frankly aren't true. So I really appreciate you for that and I know you're gonna do a wonderful job on City Council and um, gonna miss you. Reverend Haywood, so um, he is our deep thought person. He's not sleeping during the meetings, I promise you. He is just in deep thought and he
Oh, sleeping too.
I think, I think he needs CPAP, but um, he, we'll get through a meeting and all of us have said things and then he has a comment. And it is the most um, moving, thoughtful um, comment and it really causes you to rethink everything that you have just said and almost uh, refocus your line of thinking. And I'm gonna miss that as well. And um, he's a, a, a very um, well-respected and um, well-loved pastor um, at his church and he really pastored to all of us in the good times and the bad. Um, and uh, he's also our sergeant in arms and we won't get into what he's had to do to uh, keep us in line. But uh, I thank you for, for the years and we, we came on together, so it was, it's been a, a wonderful journey and we have um, together have turned the ship around with, with Dr. Boone. I think uh, it's been rough, uh, but we've stayed the course. And then for Dr. Robinson, um, you're right, sometimes there's things that you say and I'm like, did he just say that? But, but one of the things that he um, would say a lot, um, but if it's okay if I can say this, but it's something that I um, have taken uh, myself, and it's good advice. Doesn't need to be said by me. Doesn't need to be said by me now. Um, and uh, doesn't need to be said. I think, I think I got the, the gist of it. But um, Dr. Robinson has played a couple of different roles on the school board and he has really shepherded us into good leadership and governance. He has been uh, very truthful and respectful um, during lots of discussions that we've had. And he um, has been a tremendous asset to making sure that we have uh, think about families and engagement um, and customer service, uh, about how we treat others. And I'm, I'm really gonna miss you on the construction committee and every time I see a parking lot or a can of Flexial, I'm always gonna think of you because we were always trying to think of ways to save money um, and do things so that you could keep the kids um, warm, dry, um, and uh, in the best learning environment possible. So I'm gonna miss all of you all, but I know you're gonna enjoy your time off and uh, your little tokens there, we'll, we'll see you soon.
Dr. Boone, any comments?
I, again, I, I did mine earlier as part of the presentations. Just want to say thank you for your service to the children of Norfolk.
Yeah, I'd just like to piggyback on that um, uh, we had graduations last week. I had the honor of being at all five and don't know how many hands I shook. But uh, as each one came across the stage and uh, with bright eyes and aspirations, uh, I think is a testament and a testimony to the work that we've done as a board and as a governance team uh, with Dr. Boone's leadership uh, and, and all the administration and teachers and staff. Um, so I think, to me, as we've talked about it, we all know that that's the real testimony to the work and what the work has been about. And I just thank you all for uh, uh, making the students uh, uh, the forefront of what we do. Uh, I'd also just like to say for the record, you know, we had a conversation earlier about uh, you know, how we had all these policies on the, on the agenda. I just want you all, you know, normally the chair doesn't speak much. If you notice, I don't speak much. But you saw the conversation we just had. So I just want you all to know at the work sessions, sometimes we want to do a lot and uh, and we've done a lot of great work together and sometimes that results in us uh, having to restructure some things, but we had about an eight-hundred batting average, I think, in terms of our starting on time, ending on time and we will uh, you know, forgive uh, this evening, so I hope you all will uh, with the warmth of that. The last thing I just wanted to uh, mention, uh, and I should have done this as part of the report. I was sharing earlier about the work that's been going on with the city and the school steering committee regarding the uh, academic technical, comprehensive academic technical high school at, at Booker T. And um, I like the comments that we hear uh, from the public. Those that have known me long enough know that I think that uh, you know, the agitator gets the clothes clean. So I think it's great when we have uh, people who are engaged and care about the students here. I just wanted to share one thing and uh, you know, Ms. Hester made comments earlier about some of the things that um, that the community wanted. Um, polytech, CTE, and art, feeder schools, quarterly community meetings. The, the polytech CTE is what the discussion and work has been about for these years and I'm pleased about the movement that we're doing there. Uh, the feeder schools, that's what um, we talked about earlier today and at the last meeting and I, we even discussed how we will do a much better job of getting that information out to the public. And quarterly community meetings, it may be more than that, but there is a commitment to do community meetings, uh, not only for the CTE, but also for all the educational planning work that we've uh, been doing. Being on the school board is hard, uh, it's tough. Uh, and I just want to thank you all once again, you know, those of us who are parents often have the dilemma of how much do we allow the children see the parents argue in front of the children? So we know in one sense, uh, it's important because it allows them to see how you work through things in order to grow. Uh, but we know sometimes there are things that happen behind the scenes that you would never see uh, in front of the scenes or in front of things. So I just want to thank the board for, and my colleagues for all the yelling and fussing and email and uh, everything else that we've done uh, behind the scenes as well as the tough discussions that we've had uh, in public view for the betterment of, of children. So. That's my remarks. Thanks again and Ms. Doyle will be calling on you soon.
I welcome that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, for the good, we will adjourn. Thank you.